It started, and Dr. Lenart can join us when he's able. Can we go ahead and call this meeting to order, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Gendal.
President.
Councilman Rixby.
Here.
Mayor Protemory Daly.
I'm here.
Mayor Duver.
Present.
And I understand Councilman Lenart will be a little bit late. Thank you.
Okay, it is my turn to do the invocation and pledge of allegiance, so if you would join me, please. Please bow your heads. Dear Father in Heaven, thank you again for the chance for us to come together and work on issues and affairs that concern our fellow residents, community members. Please guide us this evening with our decisions, help us with our wisdom, and we offer thanks to you for all the blessings that you provide, in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. City Manager, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir, but tonight I would like to introduce our new lieutenant. Lieutenant Casey Smith will be assisting us from now on. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Lieutenant Casey Smith. I've been on the Sheriff's Department for 23 years. Some of my assignments include four different patrol stations, which include Victorville City, Rancho Cucamonga, Victor Valley, which has the city of Anahloano, and also Central Station. I was a sergeant there before my last assignment at Civil liabilities. I was there for four and a half years, so I do feel like I'm an attorney, sir. So, four and a half years there, I was a sergeant and then promoted to lieutenant, and I'm excited to be back at Central Station, especially serving you here in the city of Loma Linda. I look forward to working with all of you and being a resource. I also wanted to mention that we are going to have a National Night Out on Tuesday, August 3rd, from 6:00 to 8:30 at the State of Brothers Market. We were unable to do this last year, and I honestly don't know the last time it was done, but we're looking forward to having a community event with our firemen. Partners are gonna bring a truck out and just reaching out to the community and letting them know that we're here for them. Thank you very much.
Can you explain a little more what National Night Out or Night Out, or what was it?
It's just a way for the police departments and sheriff's departments to reach out to the community, like show about crime prevention and drug awareness. And then I'm sure the fire department has some type of awareness, just a community reach out.
Okay.
Event. Yeah, and we're very gracious to State of Brothers for providing us with the venue.
Good, thank you, welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, move right along into public comment. If there are any members of the community that'd like to speak, now is your opportunity, on anything not agendized. I'll look over at our IT professionals and see if there's anybody online that is raising their hand. I see no anybody in the audience wanting to come forward. Nope. Okay, from there, we'll move on to our scheduled items. Item number one, a presentation regarding the status of our housing element and an update.
As you know, we're required by state law to have a housing element as part of our general plan. We're also required to update that on a periodic basis, either four or eight years in an update. We're shooting to hit the window and the timing so that we can do an eight-year update like we did last year. The state does require us that we have an inventory of available sites for specific low, moderate, and very low-income housing. And Laura Stetson from MIG will explain how we've done that inventory and what the impact is upon the city from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. It's, I'll have to say, this is the first time I have been in a venue like this for over a year, and it's very comforting to see faces and be able to interact with the public again and with elected bodies. I'm Laura Stetson, I'm a principal with the firm of MIG. We've had the pleasure of working with your staff for many years on many planning projects, just an excellent staff and a great team partner all the way around. I'll keep this presentation fairly brief tonight. I know you've got a short agenda, and it's gonna be a beautiful evening to be outside afterward, so you might catch some sunlight tonight, if possible. And Conrad, I think I'm in control here, I am. Yep, we're good. Tonight, we are presenting a portion of a draft of the housing element. This is, as Conrad indicated, part of your general plan. It's required to be updated every eight years. It is the only part of your general plan required by law to be certified by a state agency, the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. I'm gonna use two acronyms only tonight, HCD, and also the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, RHNA, or RENA. So if you hear me say RENA, that's what that means, and I'll explain that in just a little bit. What we'd like to do, as a takeaway this evening, is if you have any direction with regard to the materials that we're presenting, let us know, because we will fold those into a draft housing element that will go to HCD for review in about a month's time here. As I mentioned, this is something that is required by law. This is something every city and county in California is required to prepare and to plan to accommodate each jurisdiction's fair share of housing at various income ranges. So this is all about providing the capacity for the market to build the housing per your RENA, per the allocation. The due date of this housing element for this sixth cycle, believe it or not, this is the sixth time you've done this, is October, but there is a 120-day grace period, and we will be falling within the grace period. We will not be till you be before October 15th, just because of some public review period times that are required. The focus of the housing element is a housing plan, which identifies where Loma Linda is looking to accommodate housing for various income groups over the next eight years, and what are the goals, policies, and programs that will allow that to happen. The inputs into that plan are analyses that are very structured in terms of what state law says are required. You need to look at what are the constraints to housing development, be they governmental, your processes, your fees, your zoning regulations, and non-governmental. What is the market doing that might be constraining housing development? What are the needs in the community? Who are the people who live here? What are their income levels? What are the demographic trends? Are there any special needs groups? For example, is your senior population growing? Do you have families with large children that have particular housing needs, maybe a little bit bigger houses? We also are looking at the progress that the city has made towards implementation of your housing element from eight years ago. By looking at the progress, that helps us all understand, are there programs that need to be continued because they're working well? Maybe ones that you'd like to disband because they're really not providing the forwardness in housing production that you're looking for. So we look at the progress, and we also look at the resources that are available, both from a land standpoint as well as a funding standpoint. So a little bit about the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation or Assessment. This is something that is a very top-down approach from Sacramento. Sacramento looks at what the growth trends in the state will be over an extended period of time and allocates that growth throughout various regions of California. As you know, Loma Linda, San Bernardino County are part of the Southern California Association of Governments, and for this eight-year period, HCD has indicated that the SCAG region needs to accommodate 1.3 million. Let me pause a minute. 1.3 million housing units across the six-county SCAG region. Two-thirds of that allocation, if you will, is really to address pent-up demand and the fact that there has not been housing production that's kept pace with need over the last many years. And so this isn't just accommodating growth, this is accommodating overcrowding. It's accommodating people who would be looking to move into their own housing units if they could, if they were available, if they were affordable. So of that 1.3 million, Loma Linda has been assigned a RENA of just over 2,000 units. That's a pretty big number. That allocation was finalized in March of this year, and it was something that was developed through a process whereby there was a methodology created, an assignment made. Cities had the ability or the opportunity to appeal their RENA if they wanted to. I don't believe that Loma Linda did. There were about 58 cities in the SCAG region that appealed their RENA. One was granted relief.
If, this is something I've struggled with for the, what, 10, 12-year, whatever, however long I've been on the council to understand this. And I won't get into all of my questions, but if I understand that 2051, we are deficient, 2051, to meet the, what is it?
The RENA.
Right.
That, I wouldn't say deficient, it's more of partly not having kept up with growth, but also partly creating capacity for new demand for housing. So it's both existing demand as well as projected demand.
Well, I can tell you, for the last 10, 11 years, we've worked hard to get caught up on this. What? All right, go ahead and turn your speaker on and help me understand what you're saying.
There is a distinction between the RENA numbers and the actual housing provided. So we've worked very hard to provide physical housing units for low-income and moderate-income housing. What we're discussing tonight is the capacity in the system for future growth. Not what we've built, but what we have zoned and available to be built. And there's no real requirement that we actually build it. We have to have it available that as a developer comes in or the market demands that, that we have properties zoned for that.
So as we plan future development, we preserve areas that would enable us to meet these requirements?
Correct. What we don't want to do is take a huge swath of residential and turn it into parkland or commercial, because then we need to find additional residential space, someplace in the city to make up for that. But it purely is the ability and the capacity to build it, not the as-built, which we have worked very hard and are in excess of.
Yes.
In fact, Mayor Protem, I have a couple of slides I can show you, the numbers that where the city has made progress, which is great. In fact, here we are. Let's start first with having a little bit of breakdown with the RENA. This is not just 2,051 housing units. It is divided up by various income categories. The percentages that you see there are, for example, for very low income, so those are households that are making between 31% and 50% of the San Bernardino County average median income. And off the top of my head, I apologize, I don't know what that is, but those, that's considered very low income. So that you can see between the very low and the low income, the obligation is to provide land capacity for 834 low, what we qualify, call as lower-income units, for the future. And Conrad stole my thunder on the bullet point at the bottom there. This is not a construction obligation, it is simply creating the capacity. The city is not in the business generally of building housing. You're there to help the market and others, even affordable housing developers who may want to come in and take advantage of a great place to live here in Loma Linda. So what can we do to understand working toward that 2,000 number? Well, you can look at projects that have been approved already, and we can count anything that has not received a certificate of occupancy or will receive it after June of this year, or I'm sorry, since we've already passed it. So anything that's in the pipeline that has not yet received a certificate of occupancy can count towards that number, as well as projects that are in the application process today, so things that you may still be considering. And then when we take those, that, those two resources, if you will, then we need to look at vacant sites, sites that perhaps could be redeveloped because they're not developed to their full potential. And this time around, cities and counties also get to count accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, toward the RENA, that this is something that's new. And the reason for that is because with changes in state law about three years ago that really loosened the reins on accessory dwelling unit production, many, many communities have seen a boom in ADU construction. And in many communities, the ADUs are affordable to lower-income families just because of the size of the units. And believe it or not, because, yes, they're sometimes called granny flats, and sometimes grannies living there, rent-free, and grandpa too, or other relatives. Right now, the city has over 400 units in the pipeline that have been approved, actually well over 400. So, you know, that's getting us more than a third of the way towards that RENA number by just looking at what you've got going on right now. The two large projects are certainly the Citrus Trails, which is under construction, and the Park Senior Living Apartments, which has been entitled. And so that's a big chunk right there of projects moving forward, as well as a couple of other smaller projects. And believe it or not, we are, yes, counting every single, single-family home that is being proposed, as well as those accessory dwelling units that may be associated with them as well. And so when we're looking at sites that are vacant or underutilized, meaning sites that do not yet have a housing development proposed on them, we need to look at what the use is on the site today. We need to figure out whether or not there is a realistic potential for it to recycle. Is, are there very few improvements on the property, which would mean that the property owner could see value from redeveloping that property? Are there properties, a lot of smaller lots that are adjacent to each other that are actually under a single ownership that might be combined and create a bigger project or bigger site? That's something that we look at. And then we also look at what the development density yield is. That's part of the equation as to is there enough incentive in that number for a property owner to want to redevelop his or her property? And so these are things that the state has laid out as the criteria, if you will, under which we look at sites that might be potentials for housing. And I apologize for the washed-out quality of this exhibit, I think it's just the lighting in here. But what this map shows is projects that are approved in yellow, vacant sites in the light blue, underutilized sites in kind of that lime-green color. And then outlined in a blue are projects that have already been approved. And then we've also indicated pipeline projects. And you might look at this and say, well, you know what? A lot of those vacant sites are up in the hillside area. Indeed, they are, but they're vacant, and somebody might be able to get one unit on there, one unit plus an ADU, or if a property is large enough, it might be able to be subdivided, provided that it meets the minimum lot size requirements of the zone with which it is. So these are the sites, and the way it translates number-wise into these various income categories, as you'll see, is the fact that we've assigned them to income categories based largely on two things. Number one, has the developer told us already, or do we know that it's going to be housing for lower-income households? Or two, is the density of a value, is it high enough that it is what the state calls a default density? Meaning it's high enough that one could presume that it could be affordable housing? It doesn't necessarily mean that if somebody's zoned for 20 or 30 units per acre, that they would build affordable housing, but the presumption under state law is that the density's high enough that it would pencil out for affordable housing production. And so if you go down to the bottom there, what this chart shows you is that based on our calculations, when you're looking at all of those properties, there is actually a surplus of properties that could support affordable housing, given their density of 331 surplus units. Also, a surplus of moderate income and a small surplus of above moderate, your higher income, and a deficit of low income, which is okay, because we can switch back and forth between the very low and the low when we're trying to hit the RENA target. Now, you might ask, okay, we have a RENA of 2,051, why are we going over it? Are we overachievers? Have we calculated too high? The reason for having a buffer, if you will, is because when this element goes to the Department of Housing and Community Development for review, they might look at some of the sites that we've identified and say, we don't think that's a good housing site, so at least we've got this buffer to draw from then. But more importantly, and this is critical, over time, new law requires that if a city has designated a site and assumed it to be for lower density, or I'm sorry, for lower-income housing, and it's built with market-rate housing, because that's what the property owner wants to do, the city has to prove that it still has capacity for its lower-income RENA. That's where that buffer is important. It gives you that cushion to say, well, somebody had a site where we had assumed 200 units, but they're all gonna be market-rate, but guess what? We still have this buffer, so we still have, in this case, it would be 131. And so that's, that's why that buffer is important. There's something called, what I've just described is called the no-net-loss law, so that you need to make sure that you always have the capacity for the lower income. If somebody builds a site at lower income that's designated, that's great, that just means you're making progress towards the lower income. So the buffer is there in the event that somebody does something different than what the housing element has planned for and anticipated. Let me pause there, I'm going pretty fast, yes. Oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Through the chair. My question is, has anybody ever studied to see if an intransigent government that made no progress at all ended up with a low RENA assessment the next time around, or a higher one than a city that complied with and built lots of low-income housing? In other words, is there some incentive to stiff-farming the state?
That's the does no good deed go unpunished clause. The state has really turned the tables on that type of bad activity. This time around, cities who have not built much housing are not being given a lower RENA just based on their past record. In fact, they may be penalized because they have not been providing the housing that has been promised, if you will, over the fifth-cycle RENA. So this time around, bad actors have not been rewarded, if that's your question.
What's the penalty, though? What's the reality that there is a penalty? And we're talking about, you know, cities that we've heard for years have not done anything in terms of RENA progress.
Right now, there really aren't penalties. You may have heard that the city of Huntington Beach was sued by the Attorney General over their housing element, and it was largely because they were making some changes that ran counter to this no-net-loss provision. At the time, it really didn't exist, and they just weren't doing what they had promised they'd do in their housing element. The state legislature has talked about putting penalties in place, but today, there really is nothing other than the threat of lawsuit, not just from the state, but from a, anybody could sue for not implementing your housing element. That's really the current threat. Sometimes, if you don't have a compliant housing element, meaning you haven't met the deadline, or there's something else materially wrong with it, the city would not be available for some grant and loan programs through the state. And I believe, and Mr. City Attorney can correct me on this if I'm not stating this correctly, is that there has been a tie made also between housing and transportation funding. So it's not just not being able to get grants and loans for housing programs, but some of it might be tied to transportation funding as well. So it's a penalty for not really moving forward.
I know you're not finished, I was gonna let you finish, but since my colleagues have asked questions, I just want to be sure I'm tracking this up to this point. My colleagues on the dais, I'm sure, are much brighter than I am in terms of comprehending all of this. But if I look at this from 36,000 feet, the intention is that there be affordable housing for people at various income levels in any city in California, correct?
Correct.
Now to get personal just for a minute. I have a brother that's more affluent than I am, who lived for two or three years in Brentwood, and then he moved to Santa Monica, then to South Redlands, and now he lives in Santa Barbara. He's never heard of any of this stuff. Now, I will concede, I doubt he tunes in to city council meetings at any of those cities, but, you know, he's in Santa Barbara, they want to move and find a bigger house, and he said, it ain't there, there's just nothing. It is so, the cost of any housing, even houses that are smaller than the ones that he and his wife live in, it's just incredible. So I come back to the questions that you were just asked. If there's no penalty, you know, at Loma Linda, we're trying to be conscientious and follow the law and stay out of trouble. My impression, it's a naive impression, but my impression is there are people, or there are cities, that are blowing this off, and if I understood you, there's no concrete penalties that we pay if we blow it off. Am I right, wrong, or misunderstanding?
You are correct. The, no penalties from the state, but I will let you know, at least I know in Los Angeles County, there is a group called Abundant Housing, a nonprofit organization that is bird-dogging many, many communities in LA County to ensure that they are planning appropriately, under threat, you know, likely of a legal challenge if they do not have an adequate element or are not making progress. So it's not necessarily just, it's not the state, but there are private groups out there that are, see this as a cause, if you will.
Okay.
And just as an aside, if I may, Mr. Mayor, they issue bulk Public Records Act requests to cities across the state, and they look for cities that they can target for this sort of litigation. So we never want to be in a position where we're not fully in compliance with state law, where we're not presenting, you know, a commitment publicly to comply. We would never want to paint a target on ourselves, especially when we have the ability to comply, and we are complying.
And I'm not suggesting we not be in compliance just because other people don't appear to be. But there is a risk-benefit ratio that we need to calculate in here somewhere, too. What's the risk of getting into trouble and so forth versus, there are people that are in the constituency that are closest to me that feel we're over-developing, and they're concerned about sustaining the quality of community and so forth in Loma Linda.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I think that what's really important for Loma Linda is this housing element has identified capacity under your existing general plan and zoning regulations. We're working in many communities right now where they don't have that capacity, and they're having to do massive rezoning to meet their RENA. Doing work in Garden Grove, a community of 75,000, that had a, just unimaginable RENA of 19,000, and they are having to double density in many zones to achieve their RENA. In Loma Linda's case, through the foresight of prior planning commissions and city councils, there is the capacity for this. There is not a requirement to do any rezoning, so that's a plus at this point.
That helps me understand it.
Good.
That clarified it, thank you very much.
So this is not creating a capacity, I think another, for the people listening tonight, this is not creating capacity above and beyond what exists today. Shall I continue?
Yes, ma'am.
All righty. A key component of your housing element, in addition to this sites inventory, are what are the programs that you've put in place, not just to guarantee this capacity, but also to help move housing along, to help encourage affordable housing where it's appropriate, to help families and other households that may need some assistance with housing? And so we've looked through your current element that dates to eight years ago and have found that there are a lot of good programs in there that should continue through this next cycle, including prioritizing housing for special needs groups. As I mentioned, that would be seniors, large families, disabled individuals, working with the county on housing choice vouchers, so that's really not something that you manage, but you might have references to lower-income households who are looking for vouchers, or what people sometimes refer to as Section 8 vouchers. There were programs in your element from eight years ago to address accessory dwelling units. You recently adopted a brand-new ADU ordinance that complies with state law, so you made progress that way. There are a number of other state laws that will have to be addressed in your zoning code subsequent to this housing element, including preparing something called Objective Design Standards, or ODS, for the review of multifamily and mixed-use projects. And that's something that we're working with your staff on right now, and will come before you probably in October, November of this year, after the housing element. There are programs in the current element that we suggest we continue to encouraging work with the university to see if they can provide additional housing for both students as well as faculty on university land, not necessarily on lands off the university. Code enforcement, you know, the units that are here today, the best way to keep affordable Code enforcement, you know, the units that are here today, the, the best way to keep affordable housing is to make sure housing that is affordable stays in, in good, good condition. There was a requirement in your prior element to address something called a reasonable accommodation. This would be for people who may be disabled and need an adjustment to their house, like a wheelchair ramp that might encroach into a setback. There is an easy process now, through a minor deviation, for them to get that. So that's, that's something that, that has been accomplished. These are a few of the programs that we will be bringing forward to you in the, the draft element. I already mentioned the no net loss requirement, so there'll have to be a tracking program that Conrad and Lorena and others will have to help set up. Continue to promote accessory dwelling unit production in any manner that you see appropriate. Address homelessness, we can come back to that if you like. But I wanted to focus on that fourth bullet point for just a minute. There is a law that went into effect about a year ago that says that any religious institution that wants to put housing on its parking lots, up to fifty percent of the parking lots, is not required to replace that parking for that church or synagogue or, or mosque or whatever it is. And so the questions that we'll probably come back to you and ask is, do you want to do anything to encourage that through some type of overlay? Or just have, have it available, recognizing that state law allows that to happen, and, and let people come to ask for it and not make it so obvious? At least we'll have a program saying the city recognizes that, that that is something that state law allows.
I can't imagine too many, I can't imagine too many churches or, or faith systems that want to encourage living on their church properties, but I may be wrong. So I'm just, I'm asking, do you, do you have examples of this?
Yeah, we have, we have one here in the city who would like to.
Really?
Yes.
Interesting.
I'm, I'm doing work in the city of Pasadena right now, you know, population one hundred and forty thousand, with a lot of religious institutions, and they have had a lot of interest, believe it or not, just because they feel that that's part of their mission is to...
But is that directed towards like, are we talking now homelessness? Are we talking about part-time, transitory housing? I mean, I'm thinking like, they want to put up a house for the pastor to live on the property.
No, they're, they're, it's all over the board. It could be transitional housing, meaning people who are homeless looking for additional services and want to stay there, or even low-income, you know, permanent residents, low-income residents, for those congregations that feel that that's a, a big part of their mission.
The one we're dealing with is looking to supplement their, the church revenue to help finance construction.
Now, that, I see that as a business opportunity. That, that makes sense.
That's their purpose for to have housing.
Yeah, that, that is a different mission.
It's a dual-purpose mission.
It's not as faith-based.
A, a couple other things, largely just because these are required by law, including monitoring any housing in the community that is covenanted to be affordable and maybe losing its covenants over time, just to, to monitor those. And then I, I just mentioned the term transitional housing or supportive housing. Those are types of housing for people who are transitioning out of homelessness or just need supportive services in the housing development. And that's something that has to be allowed by right in multifamily zones, just like any other multifamily zoning or any other multifamily project. It's not to be treated any differently. And so we need a program that makes sure that that is in your, your code today, or in the near future. So getting towards the housing element, our next step from here, we're, well, we're actually past the workshops. I guess we're still in the summer of twenty-twenty-one up in the upper right-hand corner there. So we, we had a meeting with the Planning Commission in June, similar to this meeting, to, to present the, the housing element. We will take any and all ideas, put them into the draft element that goes up to the state for a sixty-day review period. During that period, the state negotiates, if you will. They say, we'd like you to make this change to the element, and if you make that change, we find that it could be certified. That's, and then after we go through that period, we would go back through the public hearing process with the Planning Commission, and ultimately back to you with a bow on it, because HCD says, looks good.
Didn't we have some community workshops or meetings towards the beginning of this year?
We did, indeed.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and actually, and this will all be in the element, we, we did a series of focus groups as well and got really great comments, speaking to, to housing advocates and housing services providers in the area. So those notes are all available if anybody would like to see those, as, yes, as well as a community workshop. With that, I will respond to any other questions that you might have or be receptive to.
I think we've saved all of our time for Dr. Lenart and his questions.
Okay, I have a lot of questions. How do you address this?
Mr. Jindal, do you have any?
I want to move back to my comfort zone in terms of starting to learn a new topic, which is thirty-six thousand feet. And my question related to that is if you obviously are, I don't know if you consider yourself an expert, but you know a heck of a lot more about this than I do. So if you look at the state of California and the status of cities from in compliance, excellent, to in trouble, where would Loma Linda fall on a scale of one to ten on that kind of a spectrum? He's biased, so I don't, I don't always trust him.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this instead.
Okay, linear.
You're under the radar. I, I think that the, the city has made good progress towards accommodating housing for, for all income levels that come in. Cities that have a lot more resources are the ones that are near the ten. Cities that don't have resources or don't care are at the lower end. And I, I would say Loma Linda's good, solid middle or on the other side of the five.
So under the radar, meaning if I understand you, that we're making headway, but we need to keep this, we, we need to implement what you've described here in terms of our planning and available property for...
That's your policy decision to make. I will simply say that, as I've indicated, that the land capacity is there. It's a, it's the council's decision, you know, whether or not you want to have more robust programs or just stay the course with the programs that you have, in addition to the ones that are required to address new state laws. So that's, that's a policy call.
I understand, but we're under the radar as far as the state's concerned.
Well, not now, because they're watching us.
No, it's all right. I've got nothing to hide.
When we were doing our...
We're making appropriate progress.
When we were doing our outreach, we did not have anybody say, Loma Linda is just not meeting its obligation. There were, there were no negative comments as part of the public outreach process.
To set his mind at ease a little bit.
So absence of the negative is a positive, I guess. Okay, go ahead.
We have traditionally done pretty well during the last eight-year period, correct?
You know, that's, that's a great question, Mr. Mayor. I need, we will be showing what your progress has made. You had a much lower number last time, and I think, looking at the numbers that we looked at tonight, you probably met your arena.
We were positive.
Yeah.
So I'm just saying, in terms of...
Positive in terms of...
Of our...
Low-income housing.
Yes, yes.
Low-income housing.
Oh, for that last rating period, or whatever you call that, is eight-year segment, right?
Correct.
So I think if you look at the cumulative history, we've been on the right track. We're moving in the right direction. We haven't gone that far askew. And I think these numbers this year were much larger for everybody than ex, I don't want to say expected, but it was just much larger than what we've dealt with in the past, so...
That's exactly correct.
And I think the part that, the slides that speak the loudest to that is there at the end where she had the programs and the listed. There were a lot of them that were continue, continue, continue. So it's keep doing what you're doing. There weren't any that, you know, knock this off, it's the wrong thing, or, you know, change this and go a different path. So we are headed in the right direction, along the programmatic path.
That's what I hoped the response would be. And then just a simple comment. My academic arena is an area a lot of people don't like and get bored with and frustrated with. That, I, I appreciate there are people like you who understand all the details and process and procedures. And I noticed several times you said a simple formula. There wasn't much up there that looked simple to me. But I appreciate there are people like you that can kind of help provide us the guidance that we need. So thank you for your good work.
I'll put it all on your staff. They, they've just, they're great to work with.
I would agree.
My turn. Two questions on two topics. I'm gonna start very high up, thirty-six thousand feet, and then move a little more specific. First one, what's the definition of low-income? I know you had a slide. What I'm trying to wrap my head around is, forget Loma Linda, we have some very wealthy cities, right? Falling on Dr. Daley's question, how are they providing housing to the very low-income group? And how would one even go about finding such opportunities?
With regard to the, the first question, the only way really to provide low-income housing is to have subsidized housing. And there are nonprofit developers who take advantage of federal and state programs, tax credit and, and other programs, to provide affordable housing through the federal HUD. There, there have been programs that allow, that essentially create bonds and, and have covenants on the properties that keep them low-income because of the, these bonds and, and grants and loans that have been issued. So low-income housing is housing subsidized in some manner. And I, the second part of your question, how does one go about finding this?
Well, even the first part, what would very low-income group be?
I apologize that I don't have the number in front of me, but for sake of argument, let's say that the median income in San Bernardino County is fifty thousand dollars. So anybody that is making between thirty-one to fifty percent of that average, of, of that median is considered very low-income. And that, I'm sorry, that would be a household. It's in, everybody in the household who, who has an income.
So if a household is making twenty-five thousand dollars, I would fall into the very low-income group. And then following up on that, if I was looking for housing within my income group, say it's Loma Linda, say it's Tustin, right? How would one go about finding which one or what housing units fall into the arena allocation?
You, you wouldn't be looking for, you know, a particular development, per se, that is on a property that the housing element said is for, for very low income. You would go to your, probably to the housing authority in, in the, in the county, or just, you'd be looking for housing in the newspaper, however anybody looks for, for housing these days.
And how is that verified? So like, how do we prevent someone who has, who's in the very, or, let's say they're in a high-income group, right, from taking up housing from someone who's in the low-income group?
If it is deed-restricted housing, there, there has to be proof of what the income is, tax returns or, or, that's pretty much the only way of doing it.
All right, and then the second question.
We have programs like that here in the city with, with subsidized housing providers and city-owned property. And they go through a fairly extensive vetting program. And, you know, once again, we need to make sure that we're not mixing apples and oranges, that what we're talking about tonight is the, the built-in capacity to have that versus the actual as-built product in the end.
Yep, makes sense. Thank you. Going on the website that there is for the California Department of Housing and Community Development, I saw that there's a few cities that are award-winning and exemplary for their housing elements. Closest city I found was Eastville or La Mesa. If we wanted to be an award-winning city for this, what would we have to do?
I'm, I'm curious that Eastville falls into that category.
I was really surprised by that myself.
And La Mesa, interesting.
Only that maybe because they were just recently incorporated within the last couple of years. So is there like a history element there?
They probably just have very progressive housing programs and are, are very interested in pushing the envelope on encouraging affordable housing production through various programs, requiring it as part of all residential development, really reaching out to affordable housing developers and, and being very proactive and attracting people who, who build and maintain affordable housing. There's just, there are a lot of good companies out there, very reputable companies that create really quality affordable housing, companies like National Core, Bridge, AboD.
The other point that was made previously is that certain densities automatically qualify as affordable. So a developer could build an apartment complex with smaller units and more of them on a parcel, and that qualifies. Or it could be zoned for that, and it qualifies.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very, very much for your presentation. This is just informational at this time, as we'll be coming back to revisit this, right? So we look forward to seeing you again, I'm sure.
Several months from now, but thank you for your time.
Thank you very, very much. Okay, moving on to item number two, a presentation regarding the status of our local hazard mitigation plan.
All right, good evening, Mayor. I'm Mayor Protim, members of the city council. My name is Shannon Kendall. I'm the Emergency Services Coordinator for the city of Loma Linda. And I'm gonna be providing you with an update on where we at, where we're at with the local hazard mitigation plan. Discuss a little bit about the, the general plan safety element, because it's tied closely to the hazard mitigation plan. If you recall, back in two thousand and eighteen, Fire Department applied for a hazard mitigation plan as a result of, it was tied to the wildland fires in two thousand and seventeen. So we applied for a grant to update the city's local hazard mitigation plan and general plan safety element. In addition to that, we also applied for a Southern California Gas Company private grant to assist with the updating of the safety element of the, of the general plan. So the local hazard mitigation plan headed up by the Fire Department, there is no requirement that the city has a local hazard mitigation plan. However, if the city wants to apply for hazard mitigation grants, we are required to have an updated hazard mitigation plan, which is due for, and, which is good for five years. Our last hazard mitigation plan expired in roughly two thousand and seventeen, so hence the application for the grant in two thousand and eighteen to update the plan. So what is hazard mitigation? You know, actions that we can take, strategies that we can implement, projects that we can look at for the city to reduce the impact of a, of a disaster, natural, man-made, as it, as occurs within the city. What can we do before the disaster happens to mitigate and reduce that, that risk or the impact of, of a disaster? It's been said that for, or been shown that for every dollar that someone spends or is paid towards hazard mitigation results in a savings of up to four to six dollars in, in recovery for that. So why do we prepare? Again, it's, it gives us the opportunity to be able to go after federal hazard mitigation grants. You can see some of the grants that are identified up there, the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Community Grant. That's a fairly new grant that actually replaced the pre-disaster mitigation grant program. Flood mitigation assistance, hazard mitigation grant, again, the, the grant that I referred to that actually provided us with the funding to be able to put together this, this update. Again, it reduces the injury, loss of life, property damage associated with a, a natural disaster or man-made disaster. As you can see, the general plan safety element is more of a general overview strategy, being it's a component of the general plans, general plan of risks associated or hazards associated with, within the city. So anytime there's development that takes place, it puts hazard mitigation at the forefront of, you know, what do we do if we're gonna build in this area and it's been, it's been shown that it's susceptible to, you know, earthquake or flooding? You know, what can we do to, prior to development, you know, mitigate that, that threat or that hazard? The hazard mitigation plan is a little more specific, more into the weeds, so to speak, where it identifies mitigation actions, strategies, conducts a risk assessment, hazard assessment, and then identifies risks, hazard, mitigation actions and strategies that we can take to mitigate those identified risks or hazards. And then the emergency operations plans also ties directly into the local hazard mitigation plan as it gets more into, you know, how's the city gonna respond specifically to a, a particular disaster? as it gets more into, you know, how's the city gonna respond specifically to a particular disaster. So, it's a more, gets even more fine-tuned, more deeper into the weeds of how we're gonna respond as a city. Okay, so what does HMP do? Again, we discuss hazards as we brought together our hazard mitigation team, our planning team. There's a big emphasis on anytime you do any type of planning like this, that it's all-inclusive, that you include all of your community partners, stakeholders, as well as, you know, city departments and, you know, updating or working on the hazard mitigation plan. So, we discuss hazards associated with the community. We analyze, conduct a risk assessment of those individual hazards. We identify policies or projects to, or what we refer to as mitigation action strategies to reduce those risks. And then, there's also a component of the plan that provides direction for, you know, implementing the plan and maintaining that plan over the five-year cycle that it's good for. May digress a little bit. Each member of City Council should have received a copy of the administrative draft of the hazard mitigation plan.
It's small.
Yeah, two hundred and eighty-eight pages, if I recall. Half of which is mostly the documentation of how the plan came about, the meetings, everything that was involved, the community outreach strategy. So, only the first half is, identifies, is more than meat and potatoes of the, of the plan. So, who participated in the planning process? As you can see, all the various city departments headed up by the Fire Department. And then, also, community stakeholders, Loma Linda University Health was a major stakeholder in that, in the planning process. Southern California Gas, Southern California Edison, the Cities of Lomeland, excuse me, of Redlands, Grand Terrace, City of Colton, all had input and were part of that planning team. Cal OES, Cal Fire, San Diego County Office of Emergency Services, County Fire. They all had, were part of that planning team. So, what are the hazards that we identified in the hazard mitigation plan, the local hazard mitigation plan? Fire, seismic hazards such as earthquakes, drought, climate change. You can see the various hazards that are identified in the plan. And each, each one of those hazards is gone into, as you read through the plan, you'll see how each of those was addressed. So, we identified as a team, this is what we came up with, we identified as being our greatest risk or our greatest hazards, risk hazards, a seismic, you know, earthquake. We all understand that if we have a significant earthquake within the city, that that's gonna have a high impact on our infrastructure and ability of the city to continue to operate. Wildfire, because of our large wildland urban interface. Hazardous materials, you know, because of the highway system, the trains that go through the city or part of the city, drought. And you can see the priorities that we were, if you, if you look through the, just an example, if you look through the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve hazard mitigation plan, I believe flood and terrorism, or flood and was listed higher in the, in the impact or, you know, the risk. But since that, since the two thousand and ten storms, the city's done quite a bit of mitigation as far as reducing that risk. So, it's not as high this year as it was, you know, five, six years ago, because of all the mitigation the city's done. So, what was the process? The plan development started in July. It was actually due to start in February of two thousand and twenty, but then, you know, the great pandemic of two thousand and nineteen hit us in March of two thousand and twenty, and so, we were delayed a little bit. So, really didn't start getting into the plan development until July. So, between July of two thousand and twenty and to current, we've been working on the plan. We engaged the public. We did that through a survey that was online. I believe we got somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty, eighty-eight responses. So, we engaged the communities through that. We were limited on how much community engagement we could do, again, because of the pandemic and not being able to, you know, all the social distancing and shutdowns and that. But we sent out mailers directing residents to the city website where they could take the survey and provide input into the plan. We did a public review. What you have in front of you now is the final administrative draft that we are gonna be releasing for public review, starting tomorrow morning. It'll be posted on the city website with the direction to, where people can, you know, residents can read through the plan. And then, also, there's an email link where they can click and provide comments. Same with, you know, anyone who wants to provide comment. We'll also provide a hard copy at City Hall, the Public Library, or the City of Loma Linda Library, where people can read through the plan and provide comment. So, it'll be thirty days for public review. After that thirty days, the next steps will be to make any changes, address any of those recommendations that may come in as part of that, and then subsequently send that off to Cal OES. And then, on to FEMA, that process. We are mandated to give them six months to get through that process. The review process are both OES and FEMA. After that, it'll come back to us, and we will be bringing it to City Council for adoption via resolution. Lastly, there is a component of the plan that discusses how we're going to implement or maintain the plan. FEMA doesn't want a plan that just sits on a desk for five years or, you know, doesn't get reviewed or looked at. So, there is a component. I hate to use the word requirement, but it strengthens our ability to be able to apply for federal hazard mitigation grants if we meet annually as a committee and review the plan, put eyes on it, look at the hazard mitigation strategies that are identified in Chapter Six. You'll see, if you look at Table five point two, it lists all of the various hazard mitigation actions and strategies that we identify as a team. And we put eyes on that annually and say, hey, does this, you know, is this working? Do we need to add anything? Do we miss anything during the initial update? And be able to add, so it's a good idea, and we will be meeting as a team annually to review the plan. And with that, that's where I believe. If there's any questions, that's my contact information, or I can answer any of that council or anyone has.
I have no question, but just a comment. In settings where I've worked, they do, if you write a scientific article that's dense, then they ask for an abstract, which is usually about a paragraph, no more than two paragraphs, to kind of summarize. If you write an accreditation self-study, they ask for an executive summary. I will confess, I wasn't able to get through this whole thing. But if there had been a one or two or maybe three-page executive summary that really kind of cut to the chase on what this is, it would have been helpful to me. Only because of my time and priority limitations, I guess. But, you know, I did page through it. It's certainly comprehensive. And you've addressed everything I can imagine that should be addressed. So, just something that you and the chief and others can talk about in the future is when this comes to us, if there could be, and you can decide the length, but, an executive summary or, you know, what, to cut to the chase in this, and you helped us do this with your presentation. So, that might even be part of it. But, just my thoughts. But thank you for the hard work you and your team and community and a lot of, been a lot of people involved with this. So, thank you for your work, and you did a very good job with your presentation.
Welcome. That's actually, I appreciate that comment. That's something I will definitely address with the consultant, see if they can put together an executive summary or, you know, condensed version.
Wanna echo that. Love this. A lot of good information in here. Also, I didn't know that we were once compared to Switzerland. So, that was very interesting.
For the watch, for the watch shop on Anderson. Guys remember that? The clock shop? Sorry.
Maybe we should make that our next economic, big economic activity. A lot of these pages have a sum of improvement value and sum of content value when we're looking at the exposure and risk. What does that represent?
So, the content value would be, for example, a home, you know, the value of the home itself or the structure itself. And then, there's a separate content value. And so, they differentiate that to, I guess, provide, provide data for us to, you know, look at and do a fairly thorough assessment of what the overall, you know, content or physical value of a structure would be, and separate that out from the content value.
So, why does it change? Like, I'm just looking at two examples. They're basically the same area. One is twenty million, the other seventy-one. We're saying everything inside of that parcel of land, right?
Correct.
So, why would it change?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't unders, I actually had- Brought a copy of it in front of me, yeah, which, yeah.
So, one is like A dash four dash seventy-eight, and the other is A dash four dash one one seven. Which I have the pages right here, actually. It'll be quicker.
So, what was the, I apologize, what was the question one more time?
So, if we look at the value, the second number, one is twenty-one million, and I believe the other was around seventy million.
About the same property?
Yeah. So, it's one big parcel, and it's the same outline, from what I can tell.
Okay, well, and one is addressing the risks associated or the values associated with those structures within the wildfire risk exposure area. The other one is within the landslide risk exposure area. So, they probably don't overlap. They're separate. I understand what you're saying. It looks as though it's the same.
Yeah, so it begins at the freeway and ends at the hills, right?
It looks like it's the same, so we should differentiate. But that's, that's why, because if it's, if it's homes that are associated with a wildfire, you know, it's gonna be higher, there's probably more homes or more structures within the wildfire hazards than there is the landslide. So, I can understand where it would be better to, you know, mark those areas a little more.
Okay.
If you're right, it does, it just identifies the whole. So, but those are the things that we're looking for when it comes to public comment and review.
Cause then I'll take those comments and present that to the consultant, and we can better-
And then, one more question. So, in the very beginning, you talk about our biggest risk, which is fire. And then, towards the end of this packet, we're talking about climate change and how the projections have us getting hotter over time. Is there anything the city can do in terms of mitigation, so either fire risk? It looks like we're due for a fire. We had one in two thousand and one, and I think it's at two thousand and ten was the other one. So, every ten years. Can we do anything to reduce the damage when that does happen? And then, same thing with the climate change aspect. Is there anything we can do to keep our city the way it is right now?
For example, you mentioned the fire, and that's the exact reason why our fire marshal are here tonight, is they go out to inspect and, for all the land, to see, make sure that we don't have the overgrown weeds and vegetation. And that's one thing that we do.
Yeah, so that's something we're doing right now. I'm asking, is there something that we aren't doing that we can potentially look at, that hasn't been looked at before? Something that you've identified that would either, you know, stop a fire from happening, or at least reduce the impact of when it does happen?
What?
The Uniform Fire Code says something about doing, but we keep improving the code to help with when we have a fire and prevent it from burning more houses.
Yeah, if I can, real quick, real quick weigh in on that. So, with any fire, you're gonna look at what the causes are, and there's certain, depending on, you know, what you're looking at, you know, certain causes can result. So, not every place is gonna have the same risk or the same hazards that could cause a fire as, as others. And so, you would look at what ours, for example, you look at the train, and you look at the fuels, and so, we're talking wildland fire, obviously. And, you know, we're looking at light grass and brush and, you know, and not super-high terrain. And so, some of the biggest things we can do is mitigate the brush, which we do through our weed abatement program. And so, that, that's our best effort is to prevent that. You're never gonna take away every risk. And so, you know, if you take away those things of controlling what can cause those, and our biggest risk is a cause that could start a grass fire, because that's what we have. And so, keeping the weeds away from the houses, keeping them shortened, keeping them down, that's our best effort, you know? I don't know that there's anything, you know, we look at what a lot of other agencies do and try to be consistent with what they're doing. And I wouldn't say there's probably anything anybody else is doing currently that we aren't. And obviously, if that's out there, then we would bring that back to the council, because unfortunately, most things that, when we do, it's gonna say, okay, we can do this, but it's gonna be a cost. And so, then we'd have to obviously weigh risk versus gain on that. But I think right now, our biggest thing, which I think has helped prevent a fire, has been that weed abatement program. And I think if we keep doing that, we're doing pretty well.
Got it. Thank you. It looks like the biggest risk that we have just in general for the city is wildfires in the hill. If one does ever happen, how long do you estimate it would take for us to control it?
You know, it's funny we were talking about that. We were just talking to Cal Fire, so we have, as you know, we have a contract with Cal Fire in that area. And that, that's a great contract. It's an insurance policy. We haven't used it in a long time, but it's a great insurance policy because it saves us, because what, it gets us the biggest thing that we don't have that, nobody has really around here, the local government, that's aircraft. And so, by having aircraft available, it can knock out a fire pretty quickly. We had one, I think it was, not last year, year before, kind of over off Beaumont area. That was kind of on the border of us, Redlands, and the county. It turned out to be in a county area. But they had aircraft up on that before we even had resources available on there. And so, with that ability, you can knock out a fire pretty quick. I would say probably worst case for us, when we deal with it, we deal with periods, twelve-hour working periods. And so, we also look at that for several reasons. That's kind of how we do the work clock. But we also look at that for our availability to get resources for free. So, another master mutual aid, we can get resources for twelve hours for free. And then, any fire, when this city that comes through is gonna be done, other than mopping up within twelve hours easily, just because we don't have that big area, and once again, grass burns quick. So, it's gonna blow through our area, and we're gonna get a lot of threat real quick. It's gonna be crazy for probably an hour or two, and then things are gonna start to die down, and then we should have it under control. But our hope would be, and the whole plan is, is with that Cal Fire contract, getting resources and aircraft pretty quick, we would hopefully be able to keep things controlled pretty quick before it got too big.
Any other questions? Shannon, thank you very much for your hard work. You're always very diligent, and we're very proud of the work that you've put into this particular document. I just had a real quick question. In terms of what this looks like at a, on a region-wide kind of scale? Or, you mentioned speaking to some of our partners like Colton and Grand Terrace. I didn't hear you mention Redlands. You might have.
Redlands was involved also.
I'm just kind of curious what their mitigation plans look like and what efforts they're doing and whether or not we're, not that it's a race, but whether or not they're putting the same due diligence in that we are.
I was involved, because they are, at the same time as we are, updating their hazard mitigation plans. I'm actually sitting on, they invite us, I can't make it to all of their meetings, but I try to make it to the more, you know, critical ones, provide input. And so, they're currently going through those right now. The way the hazard mitigation is actually structured, there's a, there is a document that identifies how you structure your hazard mitigation plan and everything that is involved with, you know, the planning committees and how it's, you know, the community outreach strategy. It really kind of identifies how that is to be done. So, there's kind of a map out there for everyone to follow. So, you'll, you'll see most hazard mitigation plans. If they have anybody working on it that has any knowledge of all, at all, in hazard mitigation planning, the chapters is an example in the, in the plan that you have in front of you. They're the exact same chapters in every hazard mitigation plan. How they go about doing their community outreach strategy may be different. You know, how they, they do their, you know, risk assessment may be, you know, slightly different. Most of the plans I've seen, I know Redlands is, the previous one, I haven't seen the final one. one, um, for this one yet, uh, the final administrative draft, but, uh, it looks pretty good. Uh, I know Colton's was, was done really well, cause I also am involved with emergency management, uh, shared, uh, with the city of Colton. So I was involved with updating their plan back in 2018, 2019. Uh, city of Grand Terrace, I haven't seen, uh, their hazard mitigation plan. So I can't really comment on that. But most of them, they, there's a format to follow. And it's really, uh, you know, how open in, to interpretation as to how you go about achieving those, those, um, specific chapters and, and, and requirements.
So if you turn to page five dash 15, which is table five dash two is the mitigation action tracker, you will see that we, we don't have that many items that, that, that we need to take care of. So it's, it's pretty good. That's mean we already done a lot of mitigation to the flood, the fire, the, or, or the earthquake. So we, we, we don't have that many. So.
Yeah. And I can attest to that. The, the consultant who's working on our plan, uh, has done, you know, hundreds of these for the state. He's well-known at the state level. FEMA knows him really well, uh, or the group really well. And they've been very impressed with, uh, the city of Little Linda and, and what they've done to, you know, mitigate, you know, hazards. I know that after the 2010 storms, um, Jarv and the city did quite a bit of hazard mitigation, you know, putting up the barium walls, doing the, building the extra, um, debris basins, uh, those, what they call grand barium walls, uh, to help filter, so to mitigate that issue. The widening and the straightening of the, correct me if I'm wrong, the Zanhat, Zanhat Channel? There, yeah, the storm drain there at, uh, at, at California and Redlands Boulevard. I mean, those are all things, which is why the, the flood, if you look at the plan in 2012, was much higher flooding, but in 2000, you know.
My, my understanding is that, and this is just kinda anecdotal, but we were always prepared for the hundred-year flood and that was like the thousand or 10,000-year flood, right?
Yeah.
I mean, wasn't, isn't that what the terminology that was used at the time?
Yeah, it was.
It was, it was the thing we were not expecting.
Yeah. It didn't rain for like 30 days and it just didn't go anywhere. It just kept circling around and dropping rain. Yeah.
So, anyway, we can only plan as far as we know and what we know. And you never know when that.
Exactly.
Mentioned the plane being very low, low risk, but we are next to an airport. So, I, I don't know. I'm just saying.
Well, the airport, and I guess the, the approach to, to Ontario Airport, right? A lot of the planes fly directly overheads. I guess there's that.
Anyway, thank you very, very much for that report.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have a public hearing on the costs related to the weed abatement program.
Good evening, council, staff and, uh, community members, both live and online. Great segue to what I'm about to talk about. It's the, uh, spring 2021 weed abatement program. Um, I, I wanted to give a recognition to Matt Dingman. I don't know if anyone, council's met, uh, Matt. He's our fire inspector and he's the one that's really in the trenches managing this program. Wasn't too long ago that I was in his shoes and managing the program, going out and actually doing the inspections and dealing with community members to make sure they're, uh, they're, uh, following the, uh, program. Uh, and to build off what Shannon was talking as well, and Chief Harker is, yeah, the, the weed abatement program is great because it does get rid of the, the fuels, the live fuels that are on properties. But also one of the things that we're looking for is also, um, defensible space in the south hill areas and also in the Scotch Lane areas to make sure that the property owners have proper defensible space, the 100-foot clearance. So when a wildfire does occur in our south hills, um, it gives our guys and gals on the operations side, uh, you know, something to actually give them a chance to defend the structure when a fire goes through. Cause that's the biggest thing is when you have those live fields and dead stuff right up against the property, it really, uh, affects our ability to protect the structure. Um, and then also with the ongoing building standards as well, you know, no more woodshake roofs. The, uh, eaves are sealed in, so you're not getting attic fire starting, that kinda stuff. So really making sure we're, when new developments happen in the city and the, in the, uh, very high fire hazard zone, that they, uh, we, we hold them to those, uh, building standards. So again, it battle hardens their structure. So sorry to digress. So I just wanted to build off on that a little bit. Um, before I get into the spring 2021 weed abatement program, I also want to bring something up that we are kinda doing something unique this year. Um, we were approached by the county of San Bernardino. They came to our office, uh, about, I don't know, a month ago. And we have the county flood control that goes through. And on the north side of the flood control is the habitat area. And you can see that gets overgrown. So the county came to us and they asked, hey, would you guys entertain having goats come out and mitigate that fuel? Cause it's a ha, it's a habitat area. We talked about it, talked to city staff, talked with animal control cause I imagine they're gonna get, uh, some calls when they see 100 goats out there with the, you know, shepherd out there, uh, leading them along. Uh, we got approval to do it. Um, so starting mid-August for about two to three weeks, they do about an acre and a half. The goats are gonna wa, you know, go through there and, uh, kinda mitigate the fire hazard in there as well and keep the preserve, you know, preserved. Um, and, you know, that also helps with clim, you know, climate change and that kinda stuff. It's a green way of mitigating those fuels within the habitat. So it, it's gonna be kind of exciting, something new. And then in mid-August, you'll see about 100 goats out there chewing away at the brush in the, in the channel there. So they'll be here for about three weeks.
What protects the goats from the transients?
Uh, good question. I, 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 hopefully we have some, uh, well-trained shepherds that, uh, can, can fend off those type of people.
Worried about the goats.
Francis may eat goats, but goats eat everything. So they'll eat you back.
Um, so going into the spring 2021 weed abatement program, it began on March 29th with the initial inspections by Matt. Uh, he did approximately 435 parcels. That's also going down because of all the development we're having in the city on the vacant land. So those numbers are gonna keep going down. Um, he sent the, uh, notices to property owners on April 5th, uh, to the owner of record. We had four letters returned. Anytime we have letters returned now, we post the notice on the property, take photos. So hopefully the, the property owner drives by and sees that they have to take care of it. Uh, the follow-up inspections occurred on April 19th. If the work hadn't been accomplished, uh, and they hadn't called Matt to do a time extension, then our contractor go out and abate those properties. I don't know if you saw in exhibit C, we're down to about eight properties this go-around, which is, again, from Matt's hard work. Matt's doing a great job working with the citizens to give them time extensions to make sure that they, uh, they do do the work and, uh, you know, don't get hit with those administrative fees by the contractor doing it. So, uh, Matt goes the extra step when notices get returned or he goes the extra step to try to reach out personally to the property owners and say, hey, i- i- it's, it's just in your best interest to do it yourself, you know? Cause we have to pay prevailing wage to the contractor and the administrative fees. So that's really helped make a deal in, uh, reducing the amount that the, that we're having to put on the property rolls.
Yes. Real quick, when you guys always, you always present this and usually when you come in on the night of the council meeting, that number has shrunk.
Yep. So I think we had nine.
Nine on the list.
And then now we're down to eight. We had one person pay. So, but in years past, it's still, uh, we've cut it more than half. So.
Dr. Daley.
That was my comment is, I think I've been on this council about 11 years now. This is the shortest list I've ever seen. So if, if it's due to your hard work, then kudos. You've done well. Uh, we'll talk with Chief Harker and see what kinda reward he can give you. A, a burrito or something. Yeah. Uh, but, but this is the shortest list I've ever seen.
Yes, sir.
So that, that's fantastic. I still see some names that I recognize from every year.
Yeah. We definitely have the repeat offenders. Yes, sir.
Yeah. So you still have a hill to climb.
Yep.
But good job.
Thank you. So, um, so the recommendation is to, uh, receive the report of the spring 2020 weed abatement program, approve the report, accounting of costs, and adopt the accompanying resolution, staff the due liens and assessments on the properties. And then, um, also there's another agenda item, uh, included with this is we have to enter an agreement with San Diego County Auditor, Controller and Tax Collector for the collection of the special taxes, fees and assessments for the 2020 and 2021 season. So that makes sure that the city recoups the cost for the contractor.
Any other questions on the dais? Seeing none, we'll open the public comment. I don't see anybody running down. Nobody online. One of these days when I look over, you're gonna shake your head and I'm, I'm not gonna catch it because it's gonna, it's gonna surprise me. Thank you very much. Okay. No comment from the public. We'll close the, uh, public hearing and we'll entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move council bill R dash 2021 dash 32.
Can we have a first and a second? Madam Clerk?
And the motion is to adopt council bill number R dash 2021 dash 32 determining the costs related to the spring weed abatement program and to approve the agreement with the county of San Bernardino Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector for the collection of the special taxes, fees and assessments. Councilman Gendal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Aye.
Councilman Rixby?
Yes.
Mayor Per temporary Daley?
Aye.
And Mayor Duper?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Love it.
Okay. Have a first and a second on the, we are on the consent calendar. Heart down a little bit.
No, I just have a couple. I, I have one question and a comment, uh, on items nine and 13. Nine, is, is this an existing position that we've had an opening in or a new position?
New position.
Uh, it's a new position.
So can you describe the rationale for a new position in this?
Yeah. The, the rationale I tried to explain a little bit in, um, the staff report. And so, uh, obviously EMS, um, is the biggest thing we do as a fire department. And, you know, and back in the early days, like you've talked about, in, uh, the early ambulance days and EMS days, you know, it was kind of a, a simple, straightforward, uh, program. Um, over the years, EMS has become not only dominant in the fire service, it's really expanded its scope and its role and opportunities out there. And, um, it's become a lot to manage and it's become, um, a lot to kind of be able to keep track of in order to make sure we're, number one, compliant with everything we need to be. And number two, taking every opportunity that's out there for EMS programs. And so it really takes someone who's kinda specialized in it. Um, so.
So just, just for my.
Yes.
Common language, layman language. What is this going to achieve? What, what's the gap that this will fill that we haven't had? Cause we've been providing the services.
Correct.
And this is more than of a administrative and tracking, correct?
So this'll, this'll take a little bit of workload. So right now we have our training chief who does training and EMS, which are both, those are both huge programs, tr, you know, keeping us meeting all the training requirements and standards that we have as a fire department and, and then additional ones that, once again, things we wanna achieve, such as example is it's not a requirement, but we just bought a brand new tiller truck. So that takes a huge amount of time to manage a program on, make sure everybody gets trained on that. But he's got both these huge programs. So by, um, getting EMS coordinator, he'll be able to offload some of that workload of EMS, um, onto this person who will be able to help manage some of that and allow him to have a little bit less of workload. So it spreads out the, the workload a little bit more. And then number two, um, what this will allow us to do is there's opportunities out there such as community paramedicine, um, opportunities for, um, research programs, working with, um, hospitals and, um, the, uh, um, local emergency, uh, agency for any, anytime they decide to put forward, um, a research project and everything. Well, that takes somebody to, to manage that really well and work on those relationships and, you know, basically have contacts out there that'll help us be able to work with the hospitals, work with the, uh, emergency service agency and all that. And so it takes somebody really dedicated to that. And so my ultimate goal is have somebody full-time. And that would make it really robust. But obviously, you know, in a time where we're still trying to struggle come out of, um, the COVID recession and stuff, um, I think doing it part-time and seeing how that goes and seeing if, you know, possibly both part-time might, you know, accomplish exactly what I'm looking for. Um, and we never go beyond that, but it, this, this at least gets us going or we can start offloading some workload. This person can start focusing on some of the programs and opportunities I think are out there. Well, I know that are out there, but are growing that we're not really able to capture right now. And that's what this position will be able to do.
I appreciate your explanation. I, I, and I also appreciate your strategy that we'll define it as part-time to begin with and see where that leads. Because one of our responsibilities on city council is try, is to try to beware of budget creep.
Absolutely.
And, you know, I'm, I, I don't know as much about this as you do. So I, I take your word for it and, and I appreciate the fact you're taking one step at a time.
Absolutely.
And then, uh, item 13, um, I don't have any questions about it. I just want to compliment, uh, our, our city administration for paying down our, uh, Calipers debt and ask them, where does this bring us to? Now that we pay another 1.3 million, what's left? What, what do we still have?
Right now, we should have about 7 million. So it'll be 5.7.
Okay. Okay. So we're making headway.
Yes, sir.
A lot more headway than a lot of our neighbors, right?
What's it bringing? Was our liability after? We're slipping?
Because Calipers makes bad investments, the money we're giving them is not performing well. So we're probably slipping further behind. But we would be even farther behind if we hadn't paid the money.
Okay.
It's one of those things where you can invest 2 million and be 1 million behind.
I bet you're the only guy in this room that tracks Calipers investments. I don't know. But I'm glad you're here, Dusty.
They're politically woke investments. In other words, they don't earn money.
Did you have something else, Jarv? You were gonna say?
No, I, I just asked for a review of questions, but I got them.
Okay.
I got two things.
All right. Um, so on number seven and number 11. Uh, starting with number seven, uh, just wanted to highlight. So in the background, we have that firefighters are at greater risk for cancer diagnosis, 9% higher and then 14% higher in cancer-related deaths. So just wanted to throw it out there that we really do appreciate, um, all the firefighters and our service members, uh, putting their lives at risk. Uh, one thing I noticed that we are asking funding for is a mental health support. Is that offered to all our employees? Mental health support, is that offered to all of our employees?
Yes, it is. We have an employee assistance program, um, through the company that provides our, our life and disability insurance. That is to all employees and, um, all of their dependents.
Does that include us?
Yeah. So it's my question.
We're all mentally ill. That's why we're here.
I'm sorry. I didn't get your question.
Yeah. No, I just said, we're all, all of us city councilmen are mentally ill. That's why we ran for public office.
I, I'll forge the information.
All right. And then number 11, had a little few more questions about this. Do you mind going over, um, basically the background for this? So, uh, I was surprised to read that we were paying less than $15, even though I understand that wasn't the minimum wage. Do you mind just going over the whole item?
Yes. About our candidates and the, the, the law that requires to, it's been applicable to the state.
Yeah. The, um, the student intern is, is really the only, the only position, it's very part-time, um, that we've paid. It's been above minimum wage up until, oh, up until January, um, when the minimum wage goes to $15 an hour. So we need to create that salary schedule and move that position to $15 an hour to meet the state minimum wage requirement. And then, um, we're modifying the miscellaneous plan to include the, just appro, well, I'm presuming you're going to approve the emergency medical services coordinator. And then the state and Calipers requires that we combine all of our compensation plans. We have the safety, the miscellaneous and, and the part-time into one plan. Um, and so it is, is basically to be in compliance with state and Calipers law.
I think I read somewhere here and I might, I, I can't find it anymore. Um, it will affect four positions total?
Student, intern.
Okay, actually found it. Um, this will immediately affect approximately four part-time employees who now earn less than $15.
That is, that is correct. We have four student, student, four student interns. Um, I believe one in our finance department and three in our engineer, with our. I believe one in our finance department and three in our engineer, with our engineering department.
Okay, just to confirm, so before now, they were earning how much?
Well, break the budget, thirty cents more.
It was, I think, about fourteen, fourteen seventy-three, something around there.
Twenty-seven cents.
How does that compare to, I, I guess like-minded or similar positions across other cities?
Who cares?
Across where?
Across other cities.
Who cares?
We give all their students. What we did is we did the salary survey of our position. We tried to be, a student being is the minimum, so we tried to meet the state requirement. And in addition to their pay, they get a lot of dollars that they come to work for us, so it's helped us a lot.
So they should pay us.
Well, we should be volunteers back then.
Actually, there are a lot of cities that use volunteer student interns and don't pay them at all. And occasionally. Yeah, occasionally, we have volunteers here as well as interns.
I'm sure they complain as well, Dr. Daly. I said, I think they have a lot of complaints about what they get paid.
You have a city to allocate it out here.
Yeah. For this, um, I, I think we can't answer the question, but are we underpaying with fifteen dollars per hour? I understand that that's the minimum wage right now, but most jobs around here that are hiring, right? They have well above fifteen. Is this something that we can potentially increase?
No, because these aren't, these aren't jobs. These are intern positions. They're for, they're for learning.
They're typically a limited period of time while, while they're in college. And not only the money that they earn, but the knowledge and the experience. We've had interns in our engineering department that have graduated and moved on to two cities with full-time engineering positions. A lot of that based on the experience and the knowledge that they've gained working here as the intern program. So it's more than just, more than just the, the dollars in wages, it's the, the knowledge that they're gaining.
Right, and I'm well aware of what an internship is. I've had a few myself. My only concern is that we, we shouldn't shortchange anyone, even if it is an internship and if it is part-time, which is why I asked how we were doing comparing to other cities. And I, I think going back to that question, right, if this is something, maybe not this year, but next year, we wanted to revisit, what would be the appropriate channel for that?
Of course, we can revisit and, and if we have money, it'd be, we can do it. But again, I just implemented, as a matter of fact, paying this last couple of years. Before that, it was a volunteer, so we just beef it up, so.
If everyone has to make the same amount, it's a lot cheaper to just limit everybody to fifteen bucks. We'll save tons.
Okay, but I'd be happy to move to it. But right now, our students are, are very happy that they get to learn, gain dollars and get paid, so.
All right, any more questions on the consent calendar? I have a first and a second. If there's no other questions, Madam Clerk, we can.
And the motion is to approve the items on the city council consent calendar. Councilman Gendal?
Yes.
Councilman Leonard?
Yes.
Councilman Rixby?
Yep.
Mayor Per temporary Daly?
Aye.
And Mayor DuPur?
Yes.
And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Any old business, new business, reports of council members? Reports of officers? I'd just like to reiterate what the sheriff's department brought up, Lieutenant Smith, about the national night out in conjunction with the fire department on Tuesday, August the third, right? At front of State of Brothers, six to eight thirty. And I think that'll be a pretty cool thing. It'd be nice to see our folks out for that, so looking forward to that. With that, we'll dispense with the city council agenda and move into the housing authority. Mr. City Manager, do we have any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to the only item on the calendar, which is the consent.
No bet.
First and a second? A silent second?
Second.
No, we got a silent second.
Oh, okay.
Dr. Leonard, I defer. Madam Clerk?